Ladies and gentlemen, this is our first work session. We're recording and let's say that we are doing a Facebook Live stream. And we're also doing the video archive, so we should be there. What we're gonna do is Lisa Harden, our City Park, has got the e-packet up on board over here, and it's a live screen, so she can manipulate the e-packet using her keyboard over there and the mouse. And we're gonna go through our agenda items. And out of this, what I hope we come away with is a consent agenda that, or things that are, hey Alderman, consent agenda that we can prepare so that when it comes to the final packet this afternoon, we'll have those highlighted in yellow, so we'll know what's planned for the consent. And absent some problem that hopefully will stay on consent on Tuesday, there won't be any issues. And then we will have discussions about any issues that may come up in the packet. We have a very short agenda today, so this probably will not be typical, but we will work our way through it. And actually, it's probably good for the first opportunity of doing this. If we're all ready, I think the only person who is not gonna be able to make it is Alderman Parker. That's my last understanding, anyway. Okay. And obviously, work session is a casual environment, so we'll be respectful and wanna know the opinions on stuff and try not to talk over one another, but you know, I'm not gonna do a whole lot of massive controlling of the process. So everyone's good with that, and we'll just go ahead and start. I think we have the news, one news person here, anyway. And Mr. Kemp is here for the sidewalk discussion. And he's gonna inform us, he's got a board back over there, so I think he's prepared. All right, well, let's just start going through the agenda, unless someone has something that we're bringing up with the board? Okay. First item is gonna be our minutes. I'm assuming Mr. Latimer's gonna be ready for those?
Lisa got those to me last night at nine, and so I'm gonna look at them between now and today and give her my corrections, and I'll be loading up a plane for Tuesday.
Okay. Has anybody got any problem with those potentially on consent agenda? Okay. I don't think we've got anyone to, not interview, we don't have anyone that we're gonna need to introduce, I've been told, so at this point in time, I don't see that as coming Anything anyone wants to put up under mayor's or under board comments for highlighting it and type or anything? No? Okay. We've got this one public hearing, we have no request for public appearances. Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, as I go through this. Okay? We have no request for public appearances. We have one public hearing, which is the second public hearing on the six-month moratorium on billboards. And I don't think we've, we haven't had any comments from anyone about that that I'm aware of, on a little level, one of the things that you wanted up there?
I don't see it on the Board Business, we didn't have that added as a vote.
It's under planning, I believe. It's under planning, yeah. Okay? So, anything you want?
Well, while we're on that topic, there's two different ordinance versions out there. And one, if it stays unanimous like it has been the last couple of votes, we go with that option one, Chris Chaminet, it will go into effect immediately versus the 30-day wait. If it is not unanimous, I could do the other one. If anybody here knows you're gonna go against it, I'll just go with the second option.
I thought the 30-day wait was due to a...
Statutory, yes. There's a finding of fact in the ordinance that it needs to take immediate action based on these reasons. And so...
Do we have those reasons outlined?
Well, my reason would be just that we're going in under, you know, when we've done with pending, we've got pending aesthetic span, you know, with the grid size, if they were gonna move around them, it would prevent, you know, a lot of the reasons.
If y'all wanna hear the proposed finding of fact, this is the version that Alderman Little was referencing. It says, "A moratorium is necessary for the immediate and temporary preservation of the public peace, health, and safety and economic welfare of the community. Thirty-day waiting period for the moratorium to take effect could allow billboard owners and operators to potentially flood the city's M1 and C2 corridors with additional billboards in an effort to be the effective day of the moratorium. Thus, this moratorium should take effect immediately upon its passage."
Okay. All right. And we can put that, read that into, include that in the minutes as a part of the, even if we do consent?
Yeah, it's written to the ordinance.
Okay.
I just looked at the e-packet and wrong, it's loaded wrong, I should have swapped it out somewhere.
Okay, so, yes, sir?
Why are you on billboards? There's a billboard right there on 12, where's that common, like you're going down Denver. What are we gonna do with that billboard thing?
Well, if we can work out the particulars, I don't know if Buddy's here or not, they can talk with Lamar sign, and they want to take those down, but they want to also try to put in a couple of lit triangles. And the way that the ordinance reads now with the distance limitations, they can't, they can't take those down and put those others in. So unless we're trying to work, and Chris, we can speak to that maybe a little more, met a week and a half ago with Lamar, trying to iron that out.
And where we left on that is that Lamar was gonna present a written proposal to the city of what they were agreeable to do, to see if Buddy and Daniel could agree with their approach and could go forward in there.
And they have presented something, and the city staffs will be doing that.
Okay.
And the owner there, his family, years ago, he's getting up, working here, they don't want it there, but they sold that years ago and regret it. And he has to get it every day, but he's been an advocate. And under the plan they're proposing, he would take those down.
Is the billboard, it falls under kind of a different heading around, in state law, doesn't it? It's like, we've done our pole signs, and they have to come down to be monument signs. I mean, our ordinance has, but billboards fall under a different category, don't they, in state? They treat it differently?
They are. There's some separate statutes that talk about if you manage a domain, that's the thing you gotta pay to preserve off your value for that billboard, so their statute order is different.
Yeah. Okay. And Alderman Miller, if you're windows, man?
I'm here.
Thank you. We started on time. I would just tell you the same thing that I'll tell the other Alderman. We've got a Facebook Live feed going, and we have an archival version going as well. As Harden is controlling the e-packet through the keyboard, and the e-packet is up on the screen, so.
Okay, great.
And we are, what we're hopefully getting out of this will be a discussion of items that people wanted to talk about in depth, and then out of it, we will come with a consent agenda that seems to work for everybody, so that's the goal.
Of course.
Yes, sir?
On the consent agenda, why don't we put up an agenda? Would it be no problem for you to read what you put up?
I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to do that. And we will, we will have that as the thing that we do. If it's highlighted in yellow and there are no changes to it, then I will read it as a part of that agenda piece, which would be whatever this is, authority, really, certainly, no problem. Okay. We were just talking about the billboard moratorium, Patrick.
Do you have any issue with that?
We'll have the public hearing.
What is kind of the history on that? That is part of my curiosity.
Well, we'd like to try to clean up what we've got, kind of a cap introduction plan.
Yeah.
And we're working with Lamar right now, and they've submitted something, we have a unilateral, but we're gonna try to hash out some of the differences with the city staffs got with that. But they wanna take down those old, really, the old billboards on IBIN's been there probably 35 years or something, it's a bad area, on 12, on urban tracks.
Okay.
And our hopes are, we can cut a deal where they'll reduce the number and will allow them to put up the LED boards, because they get more advertising with the six faces on those. And we're gonna wrap them in, you know, with the new ordinance, they'll be wrapped in brick clad, and look better.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, we're still looking at a cap of 13, I believe it is, around the community?
Yeah, and I think their revised proposal too said, you know, of course, if we add action, they have a side of the...
Well, grandfather, yeah, grandfather was there, but we're not gonna allow new ones in, right? Okay. Yeah. Everybody comfortable with that as a concept?
As the city grow, they grow.
No, they don't grow.
The number will grow.
The number will grow, but they don't get to put new ones up.
There's a photo.
And there's a photo of what we're looking at out there.
And that's the list if you stay for it, it should always be a liberal rating.
Clad one.
Yeah. That would be the thing going forward.
Okay.
And they're in agreement going back and retrofitting the old signs.
Really?
Okay. And apparently, that's a fairly expensive endeavor.
Obviously, yeah.
Yeah, so, and you know, that goes to what we wanna do, which is beautify ourselves, you know? That's really part of what we wanna try to do over these next four years, is we gonna get pretty. Okay? Any other discussion regarding the billboard moratorium and the immediacy of it, of it coming into effect?
Yeah, just to catch Oliver Miller up, is that was, we have two options typically, by state statute, once something's passed, it takes 30 days for that to go into effect. Alderman Little was showing a finding of fact that, in that 30-day period, that billboard companies could rush in and be able to add more, so finding the fact that this, the moratorium would take effect immediately.
Okay. Okay. Cool. All right. Anyone else about this particular subject? All right, good. All right, I've got, and we knew this from the last board meeting, we will have a presentation by Chief Nichols, Gary Schaefer, and Weather's construction representatives on, and a gentleman named Mark Malloy, who I'm sorry, I hadn't read that, an assistant project manager providing the status on the police department, which includes the need to remediate the drainage issue or the water issue in the basement, as well as when they're gonna be done, and the projection on the grand opening and parking lot, and all the things that will remain to be done on it. So I want us to get a good handle on where we are and when we think we're gonna be ready to have a ribbon cutting. And that's the intent, so that'll be just a presentation. Then we have approval and authorization for the mayor to sign the First Amendment. Well, let me go back to the other. Is there anything else anybody wants to hear about that, that I can convey to them?
Alderman, may I be recognized?
Certainly.
They just need to be here, haven't they?
Oh, they do.
Yeah, that's a sore subject with me. $5.4 million, they need to get it right. And my question will be directed not to the police chief nor to the architect, but the contractor. The taxpayers need an answer why their money did not completely fix the building. So, you know, they've done a good job, and I have not wanted to go and look at it yet because I wanna make sure that it is complete, and, you know, and I've been at the table since there, since the discussion started, and it's just, it's taken a long time to get to this point, so it needs to conclude properly. So, you know, a lot of time there, going to the all-city officials, including, you know, the last board, and all persons involved, and, you know, and there's no excuse about having some type of pump, whatever you call it, in technical terms, you know, that if we're all spending $5.4 million off our monies, we would not approve for a building to have any type of deficiency. I know we will not, so, but I just have some very respectful questions about, about that. I mean, we all support police department don't continue to do so, but I'm just gonna have some very passionate feelings about it to the contractor, and it just depends on what he says. It'd be just like the judge said yesterday, I mean, it's a simple question. I mean, it's a simple question.
Okay.
So they just need to get it right. And at this point, I'm not in a rush to get in there, because they need to get it right. And, you know, we've been discussing this back, I mean, back in the 90s, and it's about time for this to come to conclusion. This last board, from '13 to '17, spent enormous amount of time just talking about the locations and all of the intricacies dealing with this, the last board and the board before that, you know, but then the last board went and got to the, the point of deciding the location of all of the bond indebtedness. And now here we are, we were told that's gonna be gutted out, and then we had to find out from the street about the flooding, because I think, in my opinion, Mr. Attorney, that we would have had the dedication and the ribbon cutting. And it's my opinion, that's all I'm gonna talk about Tuesday. I wouldn't wanna talk about this, I didn't come here for, to spend a lot of time, but that's all I'm gonna talk about Tuesday. My conversation will depend on what they tell me. And I think that it was being rushed the last term to have, I mean, the last week, the Friday, the 30th, the rush was, in my opinion, because I think that, you know, in all great respect, you know, to former distinguished last mayor, I think he just wanted that to be on his legacy, in my opinion, just to wanna cut that ribbon. So we just need to get it right, so that's all I wanna say. I have nothing else to say today, and y'all done a great job not to have to say that, but that's all I have to say Tuesday night. I think with this, as a great starter, by, I think at 6:30, the motion to adjourn should have intended to give...
We're hopeful.
You know, we all want to, I'm not, I'm not gonna come here and take up time, but I had to say about the police station.
Well, that's what it's intended for, so I'm glad to hear.
So it's all gonna be recognized, I'm gonna get straight to the point. I don't have to talk longer, I think I can tell them in five minutes what I need to tell them. So I'm done for today, that's all I can say Tuesday night.
Well, no, I hope you're not done for today.
I'm good, I'm good. I'm good. I just wanted to say that.
I agree with everything Vice Mayor said, Gordon. I walked through the building yesterday after class. It really looks nice where they're at so far. They've still got a little ways to go upstairs with the drop ceiling and so forth, they're in the short roads, it was not ready to take or dedicate or give energy, that we've been rushed. I went down to the little basin area, looked at it, there's no standing waters crying. I saw what had cut out the little one-by-two section of cement, and there is standing water in that hole. They're gonna have to address...
Groundwater. It is groundwater, it's been tested, yes. It is not sewer, and it's not city water, it's groundwater.
But they got sheetrock down at the bottom, you know, the bottom of the stairwells is gonna have to be reeded, and they're gonna have to devise some kind of plan, if it were ever to get water in again, to where it's not, doesn't have a material that's gonna be porous and weakening up, that's already built, and it smells down there now. And I know there's all the ductwork is gonna be there, and we don't need standing water for the building, we bring the potential moles for it and the hills, you know, so he's right, we've gotta get this ready, we need it right at this point.
Well, and hopefully...
We just went on as long as it did, we had to get off the street.
Well, and Chris is going to take a look at the scope of work, and I'm gonna take a look at the scope of work. We can all, all the children can take a look at the scope of work, see what it says, because I'm sure there will be some discussion about that. But we do need to have a building that is functional and safe, and that water is not standing yet, so. Okay? Patrick, do you have anything you wanted to say?
No.
No, okay. All right. Anything else on this?
That was my question, so we'll have an opinion about that for Tuesday night.
And everyone is scheduled to be there, as far as I know? We haven't had anyone who said they were not gonna be available by that. I mean, Weather's and Gary Schaefer, so.
And you'll email us what you find out about the scope of work, so we'll have that before the meeting.
It'd be hard for me to imagine it not getting their scope, and everyone knew going in that this building's always had water issues. You walk in, you can smell the whole building.
I understand.
You know?
It's there for a long time.
You run there for 15 minutes, and you didn't notice it. They should ask you that, not know that.
Okay. Well, we will see if we can get an answer that solves it and satisfies everyone and have a go for it, with the time when we can do a ribbon cutting. Which, by the way, I will make sure the mayor was right upfront to do the ribbon cutting.
For the order.
Absolutely, absolutely. Since he was mentioned, I wanted to make sure he was mentioned in this, so. All right. The First Amendment to the Parking Garage Use and Operation Agreement, I'm gonna punt that over to you, just in the sense that this is one of those formalities for MDA that we need to get taken care of, so.
Yeah, MDA wrote a letter and said that the relationship between MSU and the Cooley entities need to be better defined as far as the Cooley entities' use and operation of the deck. And so the First Amendment just clarifies that role and the responsibilities between those two parties.
And that would seem, it's almost pro forma, in the sense that it clears up the arrangement, so I would think that that's acceptable, everyone, that we could put that on a consent agenda as well.
The underlying deal doesn't change, just as a quick refresher, remember that MSU owns the dirt, and Starkville entered into a ground lease to be able to build the deck, and then Starkville entered into a use and operations agreement with MSU that gave MSU exclusive control of the deck on a day-to-day basis. It said that MSU could assign that control with the written approval of the city. MSU didn't assign it because there were some IHL issues. What MSU did was enter into a license agreement with Castleberry entities to run the deck for the courtyard and for other special occasions, like football games, have the Boy Scouts taking up money when people go in the deck. And MDA wrote a letter and said that just wasn't papered sufficiently, so what this does, it just clarifies that Castleberry entities can be MSU's designate as far as the operation of the deck.
So a question, concerning, I know that MDA officials have been here previously because of that issue of paying for the parking, has that, does this resolve that issue? Will there still be paid parking in the garage, or is that now done?
Two separate issues. This was a use and operations issue, and what this will do, Alderman Walker, is it will allow the deck to be used for parking for ballgames and for paid parking. That's not prohibited in the documents. What the documents say is that those funds will just be split between MSU and the city, and those funds can eclipse a certain amount of program income. I believe that that number's 25,000, which there's no way, it's very unlikely that that number ever gets, gets close. So that's, that goes on as indicated. The big issue on MDA's mind is the accounting from those receipts for the paid parking in the deck. Castleberry has put in several supplementations on that. We forward those to MDA. The city takes the position, MDA has all that we have, and they're looking at it right now to make sure they're okay with our supplementation.
Well, that is my question as well. I wanna make sure that that accounting, if we're getting split between us and revenue, between us and MSU, that, do we get an accounting every month of what that parking is, we're tracking that, so that we can make sure at the end of the day that the revenue that we get is appropriate?
I think it's quarterly.
Quarterly, quarterly, and it's, that 25,000 is net of any operating expenses that we're actually...
That was gonna be my question. Never gross, so it's net. And Alderman Walker, the contract documents say that even though MSU is assigning this duty to the Castleberry entities, that MSU is still on the hook as our partner to give us the information we need, so they can't absolve themselves responsibility of that.
So did we receive any money in the last fiscal year from the parking garage?
No, we did not. After Mr. Castleberry submitted all of the expenses for maintenance of the restrooms, the landscape, security, and everything, it was a, it was a revenue. He actually isn't made it according to his receipts.
Okay, thank you.
So we should have received something this time, coming up this year, coming up?
At the beginning of the football season, my understanding is he'll only charge us during the football season, and that's what we've got receipts on the last year, so.
I mean, we always knew, and that was the reason, I think, the mayor at the time didn't want the garage in the first place, because he felt like it was gonna be always an expense and not be paid for, or, you know, any revenue coming from it would not offset the amount of expense in keeping it up and maintaining it and any capital improvements that would have to come with the long-term existence of it, so. Go ahead, no, no, no.
The income will be from football parking and from the hotel?
I don't think the hotel is, I think the hotel is, yeah, it's part of their, that's their agreement, is to have a hotel, so.
The deposit slips that we proceeded were only for football games, and they promised this year to give us an exact number of parking places that are rented out, and they didn't keep track of that, but they promised this year to track it, and I think this agreement will require them to track.
Okay. Any other questions? Anybody see any issues about this as a consent agenda item? Okay. The next one is the mayor's youth council arrangement, which has been going on for a number of years now, and it's, I'm sorry?
I'll say consent.
Okay, that'd be fine, no one has any problem with it? Might have any issues with it? There are apparently 19 of the youth who are going, going down, and the four adult coordinators, so we'll be keeping an eye on them, but I don't have to. All right, the next one under this item is the Springer invoice for the survey that was done for the Rolling Hills Park pond area. And this is just a matter of allowing us to pay for something that was authorized and not on the, not on plain stock it appropriate. Anybody have any problems with putting that on the consent agenda?
This is guys back to the issue with, that wasn't brought forward, but we made that commitment.
Yes, yes. I promise you I would not do that.
Okay. I just, I feel like we need to make it a precedent, that that's not an issue moving forward.
Well, yes, but there, I think, are a couple of surveys still hanging out there that were also authorized, so we will see this at least one more time.
Can we roll that into this approved something?
I don't think, we don't have those invoices yet.
But we can authorize...
If you would like to, you may, but I don't have those invoices, so I can't tell you how much it is. I know it comes from Pepper, Pepper Engineering, but I don't have those invoices, so I can't do that.
I did not.
I'm assuming you don't have, okay. All right, and they are for different, they're not for the same location, now let me be clear. They are for a location off of Maple Drive, and there were a couple of pieces of property there that were being looked at for a park. And there may possibly be one, and I don't know this for a fact, there may be one associated with the park at 182 and 389, but I don't know if that was something that Dollar General, Family Dollar authorized and did themselves, or if that was something that we did. So do you have any idea about any of it?
I think Mayor of Family Dollar.
Okay, all right, well, good.
But I think it was Family Dollar.
It may only be those two then off of Maple Drive, so, but there will be one more option of this when we get those invoices, is my understanding. Next one is consideration in view of the minutes of the board of Alderman, clarification of pro-tump order to reflect a little intent of the board. This was a Jeremy Taber matter that was approved by the previous board, and it had to do with making the language match identically. Lisa, have you got that pulled up there?
These are the minutes from May 3, 2016.
Okay.
And I'll give everybody the, sort of the background, and then Attorney Latimer, you can jump in. This is the property, City Bagel property, and the property is next to it. The condition on there, and I believe the intent of the board, I certainly know it was my intent, if you scroll down just a little bit, Lisa.
The condition there.
On that, that first condition, the intent would be that the floor of the building that is accessible by street level from University Drive has 70% commercial retail, non-residential at street level. Mr. Taber is concerned, not about the requirement of that, but he's concerned, he thinks that that language is vague and opens up the floor where it says, "The floor of any building that fronts University Drive," so he believes that that language, you know, maybe Ohio's on floor two or three, that a future board could, or a future city planner might interpret that differently. So I see this as a way for us to, right now, with the help of City Lab, Attorney Latimer, just to help us tighten that language up where it's clear that we're talking about. And I'm hesitant to say the first floor, because I believe there's probably gonna be a basement that would, might technically be the first floor, but the intent, I mean, the intent of what we passed was looking at that floor that is directly adjacent to University Drive.
Street level.
And it says street level on there, and so I'm not sure if this, and, you know, if it's not clear enough already, but if we need to tighten it up in any way, here's, that's what this would...
It's kind of a no harm, no foul kind of thing to change that language to reflect the first floor.
This was the word that I received.
From?
Did you intend for, I'm worried, I'm not sure.
Well, I think, email me, well, not me, no, okay. I thought it was just tracking exactly what was, what was in the original...
So he just says street level?
Yes.
That is not, that is unacceptable.
Okay.
And the reason I say that have a minimal of one-third, non-residential use of long this frontage.
It's supposed to be two-thirds.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if he said 70%, and I would be okay with two-thirds, but that is, that is unacceptable. And here's, and here's what, so we're clear, so we're clear what the intent was. If we, if you were, just to refresh everybody, is that piece of property is not just where they tore the house down at City Bagel, it also includes the City Bagel property. The intent of that condition was that that 70% or that two-thirds approximately included the frontage of what is existing City Bagel. So they were gonna be able to count that frontage as part of that overall frontage. Here, if they make the third, I'm just telling you what they're gonna do. They're gonna keep the City Bagel, and they're not gonna have any non-residential in there. They're gonna keep the City Bagel, and they're not gonna have any non-residential in there. I think this is a move around, and I'm totally okay with changing this condition, but that, I'm not, I would not vote for that.
No, I, two-thirds is my understanding, and all I would do is track him back to what we, what the original intent was, and it should be two-thirds, so we'll reflect it to change.
Do we need to change it with the street level language already in there? That's pretty clear.
Well, street level, well.
The, the original condition, I believe, let me see what it said, it just said floor, right?
Says street level.
Yeah.
Floor, any building that fronts University Drive shall be a minimum of seventy percent commercial retail use, non-residential at street level. So maybe we should just say the, the street level floor of any building.
Yeah, just something that says it's only on that first floor, because he clearly is going to do residential on.
And below.
Yeah, yeah.
Most likely.
Yeah, most likely.
Anytime he's getting credit for the City Bagel.
Well.
The two-thirds aspect of it.
I can't really speak more about that, other than I know that, you know, I don't know what other arrangements or agreements have been made with that, that property, whether they're looking to not continue to have that piece of property, so then it becomes stand alone, I don't know that.
It's, it's an aggregated piece of property.
It is currently, it is currently an aggregated piece of property.
Yeah. But anyway, this, this will reflect what it was the board intended to do, I assume, different board, but what the board intended to do at that point in time.
So maybe from an action on pushing it forward, the motion that I had suggested had a blank to be filled in for the language to be put in exactly how we wanted. Do you want to take a crack at that language?
I mean, I would be okay if we, can we go back up to that condition?
That just says two-thirds instead of one-third?
That we, maybe we change that, where we say the street level floor.
I see.
Of any building that fronts University Drive shall be a minimum, and we can say two-thirds instead of seventy percent, I'm fine with saying two-thirds. I think that gives the, the planning and development department, when there, when there's a time that they're, you know, being able to look at that, buddy. Do you have any issues with that, or is that whoever?
Two-thirds, right.
Or is that intent, if we clear that up, is that going to be clarified enough for you or any future people that are gonna be reviewing plans in the city, in the community development department, that you understand the intent of what the board is at?
In mine and the city planner's mind, we understand it, but in the applicant's mind, he, he believes that there is some confusion that could come about in a future date, but.
We're talking about the two-thirds, two-thirds versus seventy percent, right, Jason? You know what you're talking about?
I don't know what the confusion is, I guess, I'm unclear.
Well, he was talking specifically, Jeremy, but you were talking about a general go-forward, right?
Yeah, going forward.
Yeah.
And it's an aggregated lot.
It's currently an aggregated lot.
If it were split, would the condition follow the split, or would need a new condition then, if City Bagel were torn down?
I don't need a new condition for that, because how I interpret that, City Attorney, and here's the discussion point, if that lot becomes aggregated, or becomes split, then I would say that, that that building now still fronts street level at City, University Drive, that entire building, then two-thirds of that building, not the entirety of that.
So to sum up, Oliver Walker, you're okay with that motion as long as it goes from two-thirds, or from one-third to two-thirds?
I'm totally okay with that. I think that is the intent of what, of what was, so let's make that fix.
Sure, absolutely.
Press pause.
Okay.
You got a note on that, Lisa?
I do, I was trying to say where I got that motion from.
It may have been from me, because I may have forwarded to you, and I can't remember.
Because I remember it was a cut and paste, so I don't, I just.
Yeah, and I may, I may have been on.
Just so the board is not surprised at the future date, the owners of City Bagel are desiring at some point in time to subdivide that lot. So in order for that lot to be subdivided, they're gonna have to come back to the board to address conditions that were placed on, on the approval.
Okay. All right. Anybody, any other questions, discussion about that, that matter?
Jason, so, knowing that, does that change your two-thirds of the building where?
No, it does not.
Oh, I, I'm, what I'm asking is, do you still want to count City Bagel in the two-thirds?
That's up to, I would say right now it's an, I would work on this current, I would say currently, it is an aggregated lot. The two-thirds was with the intent of, yes, that was the discussion, that you would be able to include the existing building that's there as part of that frontage. I think if the lot becomes split, then I think they have to come back to change the condition. At that point, I think it's up to this board, or the next board, the board after that, whenever they decide to do their project, to be able to make that determination.
Okay, all right, sounds good. And with that in mind, is that consent worthy? Any part of that, okay? All right, Chris, this will be back to you. This is the Cotton Moon Marketplace Project with the TIF third amendment and restated development and reimbursement agreement.
As y'all remember, Mark Nicholas came to the board before the end of the last term and asked the board to convert his sales tax TIF to an NDA tax rebate program incentive, and there was a resolution put forth to do that, that the board approved, and there was a long and specific motion that attached to that resolution that tied Nicholas to various steps he needed to do to make this happen. And I took the opinion then, and it's my opinion now, that the resolution is what NDA needed, but what the city needed to properly document from a legal standpoint was an amendment to the TIF agreement. And so that is what Nicholas has proposed, and all it does is clarify what was in the resolution, which is the Adlorn taxes drop from seventy-five percent to sixty percent, and the sales tax rebate drops from seventy-five percent to zero percent under the TIF.
So did he do what he was supposed to do, Box 107, I believe was the deadline?
I'll be very frank, he, July 5th was his deadline, and he missed that deadline, but he got it to us a couple of days later. And from a go-forward standpoint, this is a, as we talked about, a good policy deal from the city, so the board would have an option to hold him to that deadline, or let him truck along with this document and consider it Tuesday night.
So other than missing the date a couple of days, does language in there comply with what the request was?
It does. I sent this to bond counsel, they've reviewed it, they reviewed it specifically to decide whether any additional documentation was needed, whether an amendment to the actual TIF plan was needed, and they said, no, this gets the job done. They tweaked it slightly, and this applies.
Vice Mayor, you brought that forward.
Yes, ma'am, that's, oh, yes, ma'am, it does what the attorney says, it's a spam. Thank you.
Any reason that can't go on consent? Okay. Then we have under Board Business, the consideration of going to National League of Cities. Oliver Carter's the one who brought this forward, he is not here today, but I will tell you all now that travel isn't, I think you've been a little bit excessive in our travel over the last years, and I don't intend to travel except to NML in this case. What are our dues to National League of Cities? Lisa, do you know?
I don't, I do not.
Are they?
Twelve hundred dollars standing there.
Okay, so they are over a thousand dollars. I'm not gonna put in my budget National League of Cities dues, but if the board wants to do that, that's up to, up to y'all entirely. I'm not in favor of it, but, you know, that's.
That's full membership, I believe.
I'm sorry?
That was full membership, there may be a.
Partial membership, something?
Like nine hundred.
And I'm not familiar with it, so I don't know. So the board, go ahead, Mrs. Walker.
And if I could, I had asked Ms. Carter for how much we spent on travel as a board last term, and it was, it was around sixty thousand dollars that we spent.
Travel, only?
Travel.
Over four years.
Over four years, okay.
For the turn.
Over four years.
Yeah. There's, there are times when travel's appropriate, and when there's some city benefit to that travel. I'm not sure that National League of Cities brings anything back to us that we implement. We've done it a few times, but I would prefer that we attend every other year if we do attend, and that we not do it this first year.
Well, and, well, listen, I haven't, I haven't been to National League of Cities. I know the mayor, previous mayor was in favor of that. Did either of you go?
I went to one, the first, first year of the previous term, and I would say that educational sessions there are outstanding, if you, if you go to the sessions and you try to bring some of that back. I got a tremendous amount out of the one that I went to, complete streets oriented, street lighting, I thought all that was very helpful. But, you know, I think, I think the, the idea of reducing travel, I'm, I'm okay with that. I think the, the deal is, is that if you go somewhere, that, that you should come back and bring something back to the board that is at least can push a policy discussion forward, or something that you have, you know, call it report back.
Report back.
And here's what, I got some new information, and here's how it may help us tweak an existing policy, or think about moving somewhere else. I will say that this year's in Charlotte, that's as close as, I guess it was in Nashville one year, but Charlotte's close, and I would say in terms of southern cities, Charlotte is the, the city, the place, the place to be, and they have policies and things that they're doing there that much smaller cities like Sartreville could certainly try to emulate, but I do not plan on attending this, this year, but.
Okay, well, let's ask the.
I encourage you to, because it's, it's a lot that you can pick up that our city's not doing, like Jason said, it's, it's a lot that you can pick up to take us in the direction that you want to go. I encourage you to go.
Okay.
Just to pick up some of the stuff that you can bring back, because there's a lot, lots of information out there that you can pick up airbrushed.
Okay, well, I stand corrected, because I really did not hear back from anyone that they.
I encourage you to go.
Well, that was not how this was gonna come out in this discussion.
And the 2018 conference is in Los Angeles.
Well, and I would say, I would say that while individual Alderman may have attended and gotten a lot of it from somebody who was sitting in the audience at board meetings before and after, it didn't get communicated out to the public circularly.
I don't think it does when we go to NML either.
No.
So I think, you know, I think that's a board decision to decide how we want to proceed, but I don't think, you know, we, we don't get, we don't know the travel that we send department heads to, even if they're going for training, we don't, we don't know what any of that.
Well, and just for purposes of a travel discussion, give me just a second, I want to make sure that if our department heads are going on travel, that we've got something specific, like a class that they needed, or something in particular that they are going to bring back that's going to be beneficial to the city, so I want us to be very focused when we travel, and particularly for the, the staff members who would be going for a class that is for their certification purposes, not just travel. So I'm gonna be very focused on that now. Created me an opportunity to think a little differently about NLC, because I had never been, not at any point in time, so I appreciate that, yes. Oliver, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
No consent. Staff travels too much, need to go back on travel. And I can talk on this used to go a little bit, we have too much travel, we have too many staff members that are gone, they've been gone live, they need to stay here and work, and we need to cut out travel back. Of course, there is some benefit on travel, but we have a lot of the needs, we have streets and infrastructure, that's, that's a bigger priority, so, but, but we have a lot of staff members that are traveling entirely too much, and so, but please leave some of the sample.
Okay.
I'm not gonna discuss it.
Okay, not a problem. Anybody, since it's off consent.
NML's fine, NML's perfect.
No, I understand. Well, and perhaps there's an opportunity for us to bring something back from NML, I'll try, I'll try to focus on how, what we can bring back from NML as well to discuss at work session. What, what did we learn? Okay, does anyone else want to go to NLC? Let's go there, because this was, again, at Alderman Carter's request, so does anybody else want to go? Oliver, do you have interest?
I'll get to a couple of them, I've got too much going on right now.
Okay, all right. Oliver, no? Okay, all right, thank you. Well, we'll not go on consent, so. The airport items have been removed, both of them?
No, just the first, I mean, just the second.
Just the second, so the tie-down and TMA release agreement has been removed? Yes, sir.
Lisa, has Rodney gotten you Exhibit A and B?
Rodney, I think someone, he drew the staff, he drew the set, he drew the hanger.
Okay.
On, photo last night, they took measurements, got that to me last night, and then the resolution, and, and this is what he sent me? Is this what goes with it?
I'll have to look and see, I'll check that one.
The space operator is what kinda threw me there.
I will, when that hits the packet, I will look at it, is that not the data until you pulled it up right there?
There are some extra paper packets right there, you will get a copy of, to take it. That's what he sent.
I'll let you know, if it doesn't work, it's Exhibit B, we can pull it, but.
That, it matched, the wording appeared in item, one of these items.
So Chris, you haven't read this?
I've read the contract, and I saw where it called for Exhibits A and B, and none of them were attached with the version Rodney sent me. Exhibit A was, in fact, the drawing that he's, he's come up with. I just need to refresh on what Exhibit B was, just to make sure that what Exhibit B is matches.
It's in 1135 last night.
And now, are we talking about one or two?
Talking about item one.
Item one, so two is definitely off, and one, okay, one will be something Chris will be looking at for the exhibits.
We understand, because with item two, it's still a trade, recommend, recommend, to, to review.
Okay, all right, so that will be, that will be gone from that, and is it, do we want to put it on consent, and Chris can take it off if need be? Because you're gonna look at the.
I, I think it's gonna match up, I don't anticipate it being a problem.
Okay, all right. Anyone have any part of that, Jason, I saw you checking it.
If, if it's gonna be with the caveat that we just make sure we pass at the table that Attorney Lattimer has reviewed the exhibits and that it all does match, and I don't have any issue.
Okay, all right, potential consent then. All right, under planning, we have the determination of the six-month moratorium.
Let's try that on consent with, with the public hearing.
With public hearing.
At the beginning.
Okay.
Okay, move it up underneath public hearing.
Well, we need to, we'll just.
Well, yes, we can take it with this segment at the same time. Chris, did you have something?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so, and just to clarify, you want the ordinance that has the unanimous finding of fact, and so, Lisa, I know you've got two in your queue, that ordinance has finding of fact number eight, and the other one only has seven, it's the version that has finding of fact number eight, I'll give it to you right here.
So, Lisa, for, for purposes of our public hearing, we can do a second public hearing, and then perhaps underneath that put consideration, or consideration of adopting the moratorium. You good with that? You clear? You got the change?
Now, will that be consent, because it can't be consented until after the.
Well, we can, we can consent it at the table, add that as a consent at the table, and I'll, I'll caveat to that, so.
After the public hearing, is that?
Yes, after the public hearing, and.
Did we have a public hearing during the approval of the agenda?
Yes.
Yes. Then we have the reappointment of Mr. Beatty to the Historic Preservation Commission. I assume no one has an issue with any of that? That will be a three-year term, okay? Engineering, Edward, you're up, got sidewalk presentation for us? And from this, we'll hope to have authorization for the mayor's side, execute contract with the contract providing the lowest quote of each project, so.
If, if there's anything about it, if you don't want me to, me to talk to him now, if we wanna get it on, if we're gonna get it on consent.
Mayor, I was gonna just go through the presentation real quick.
Sure, yes.
At June 30th.
And he's, Edward's got the screen up, so hopefully we'll be able to get a good view.
So, no, 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 this is, so, just to kind of bring you all up to speed of where we are, it was brought to my attention last week that the almost seventy-three thousand dollars that was in the ADA improvement line, which was previously obligated to the Mill Street, was probably gonna get unused this fiscal year. So at the directive of the mayor, I put together a sidewalk, I mean, very quickly a sidewalk improvement plan to utilize those funds, with the understanding that it has to be completed by September 30th of this year, which, which is the end of the fiscal year. I just want to communicate that this is not what I would consider a comprehensive overall master sidewalk plan. The projects that I've identified are what I would consider the very low-hanging fruit that don't require much complexity from a design or constructability standpoint due to the time constraints. There's a lot of needs around town, there's, there's a lot of, I think, what I would consider bigger projects that, that could open up some great opportunities, but just unrealistic to get those done in two months. So just kind of keep that in mind. These were, these were kind of our, our approaches, we wanted to fill in some existing gaps, if there was some, some gaps between existing sidewalks, linkage, linkaging places of interest, also coming off of some of our other improvement, like our, our multi-use paths, local flexi, and then, of course, the easement process sometimes can add a lot of time, so we tried to prevent that. I have a map, it didn't really turn up real well on the PowerPoint side, I have a printout over there, as you can see, you know, it is pretty well spread out, but a lot of them, as you can imagine, are in the center of town where a lot of sidewalks already exist, so this is just a copy of the same page you have for you there. You will see that, I'll get rid of that.
It's cute, little party hat.
Sorry, just click, click back on your slide. Okay. You'll see right here under the phase one, it'll have a eighty-two thousand dollar, eighty-two thousand two fifty, understanding that that is more than the seventy-three that we have available, but we do have some contingencies built in, and we wanted to project more project than we had money for, in the case that we do run the run, we can continue to go down the list. So what I have now is just a slide on each project, and what I did is put these on a prioritized list, and what you'll see is priority one through nine, kind of fit within the budget. We do have a fifteen percent contingency built in, and then, so we'll just go down through those. those one by one and y'all feel free to stop me if you have any questions along the way. This is up at the intersection of Long and West Side. We have crosswalks here. We have sidewalk along West Side and Long, but there's no way for pedestrians to get from this intersection to the splash pad without walking in the street. So that is this area right here, about four thousand dollars for that. Crossgate, this is the, this is a sidewalk that will connect the new sidewalk that was built as part of the Penn Express slash Walmart area and also connect to the new sidewalks on Academy Sports. Will also open up a linkage to this neighborhood here.
So now you'll be able to go from Walmart to the movie theater essentially along the sidewalk to build the gap.
Right, build the gap. That's of course on DOT right away. Won't be getting a permit for that. Oh, West Point Road, this is the gap between, really, this is Glen Hollow Apartments and some existing sidewalks along, I think they call this the Ramsey House, right? Just basically right along the edge of the road. You can see where it just stops right there. A lot of folks walk from this theater apartment complex, it's in the road, in the San Arro Road, so we're recommending that.
And, and that we have a smart bus station right at the fire station, one park, so that should invite.
Pretty quick to fly right here.
Yep, exactly.
Lincoln Green, this is a connection from the College Station apartment complex to the new sidewalks that were built as part of the RV park, which do extend all the way up to the shopping center where Starbucks and that area is. We have a lot of people that walk to campus from here.
A lot of people go across to catch the smart bus too. Is that possible there at all? Does it have a crosswalk?
There's, there's not a, I think this is it. This is the trail.
And have they abandoned that?
But they are moving that stop to Lotsley Way.
Okay, all right.
So it's part of the, sorry, but so what this now, there still might be a tiny gap on Lincoln Green going to the south to the Lotsley Way, but it would be a small one. So once that tap grant gets built, you will pretty much have a contingent from there to the bus stop and wherever to the.
As I understand it, this apartment complex along with the Polos, which are just to the, to the west, have a lot of international students and a lot of folks are walking to the Dollar General to do their grocery shopping and things like that. So I think.
You'll see them pretty regularly.
Yeah, I think it's definitely.
Maybe Corky's.
Yate Street, this is just a small segment for whatever reason, has never, has never had a sidewalk. It just ends on either side. You can see just a gap there. Linden Circle, this is providing a connection. We, the, the last term, we did striping in the roadway of Linden Circle because it was really wide. You can see kind of the edge of it here, it's a kind of a walking slash biking lane. This would connect that lane back to Louisville Street with a separated sidewalk behind the curb. Because right now, if you wanted to walk, you'd effectively just walk into the street. Yellow Jacket, there's a lot of development occurring right here. As you can see, there's some construction. This will basically fill in that last segment to go from Jackson Street all the way to Montgomery Street because, you know, the area adjacent to Montgomery's already been developed that has a sidewalk. And then now the new subdivision that's going in will have sidewalks with there. So we're, the intent on this is we're continuing to kind of try and march towards Starville High School and connect it from the, from the east side. We have good, we have good connection from the west side with Louisville Street, Lynn Lane, but the opportunities to come from the east are limited.
How much right of way do we have on Yellow Jackets? We go from Jackson to, across to this high school?
It's, it's a limited amount. I don't exactly know, but that roadway section is, 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 is going to need to be improved over time. It's just that it ditches is narrow.
Right.
Eventually, we'll probably need to do a curb and gutter on both, one, if not both sides, improve the drainage and then that'll give you some opportunity to do it within the, within the month.
Okay, because that curve right there is pretty interesting, too.
Okay, so this will kind of help further that. This is one, one small gap as well. This is the old Denny's Restaurant and this is that family Dollar General, Starbucks, Shopping Center.
CJ.
Old CJ is right.
CJ's just no longer.
But it's this little swung out, for those that may remember, this used to be an old city right of way called Shady Lane. And then what we have beyond that are just four additional projects. I don't think we'll have the funding to do them this year, but if they're, we do want to run or if we hit a snag on one of these first nine, then we could move down to try to continue to utilize those funds. So what we're looking, what we're asking the board to do, do the time constraint is go ahead and give off the mayor the author, first of all, approve the plan and then give the mayor the authorization to execute a contract with the lowest quote contractor so we don't have to bring all the quotes back to the board and lose two or three weeks on that because we'll really probably need to get started within the next three weeks in order to get everything completed by the end of September.
Edward, could you go back to Linden Circle? This is my neighborhood and I am rarely going to turn down projects in my neighborhood. But the purpose of that would be to provide a small connector there from Louisville Street to that striped bike path slash parking line, which is how the neighborhood uses it, is this as a parking line. That's, that's what that small bit would do.
What you have here, as you can see, when you approach the intersection, in order to get the left turn lane and the right turn lane.
Right.
You had to.
You get that up.
Kill those lanes to use that extra space.
Yep.
So what's, what's going to have to happen to get from here to here is you're walking in that entrance lane.
Well, and somebody would, somebody would have to be trying to come through the neighborhood, from the neighborhood and trying to walk onto Louisville Street, which doesn't happen very, very much at all. So I'm going to say, if, if this would allow something to be funded on South Montgomery, if you have, if you have to say, if a project, there, there are probably projects that are far worthier on this list and if this would allow us to, with the contingencies not being eaten up, snag that South Montgomery project.
Number ten.
I would, I would delay the Linden Circle.
Okay.
It will be very lightly used and it would be used a little bit, but it would be very lightly used.
Okay. All right, Patrick, can I see your shelf?
So the biggest, the biggest objective with this is just an attempt to fill holes, basically where we just got these gaps where it just almost doesn't even make sense or we're abruptly ending sidewalks or.
Right, okay.
And on West Point Road there, we've only got a right of way until those apartments there with the, is it?
Glen Hollow?
Glen Hollow.
The ones on the other side?
Glen Hollow. Because that's on the university side right there that you're talking about.
Right, right.
Yeah. And essentially that's, I guess, consider that walkable because it's Glen Hollow's property.
Well, I think we have the right of way along the street.
The folks park on that side. They, they park on the, from the street, don't they?
Yes.
Right here.
Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, once they get here, they would be walking behind the cars.
But something to keep them off the road at least.
Right.
But, okay.
And ideally, it would be great to connect it all the way back to one eighty-two because there is a sidewalk on that.
Yeah, because of the cars.
Right, in the grave, there's a pretty steep hill right there where the daycare center is.
Yeah. Because you just, you have a ton of walking coming from Old West Point Road during football.
Do you also have, you know, the Dave Darforce folks?
Yes, I think they're.
Back toward the cotton district.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
And the travel route. Yeah.
Okay, all right. Anybody else, any other questions about projects? Thoughts?
Can I ask a question?
You can.
So, and, and the, the, what was brought to us, that, you know, I got the numbers from him and I'm looking at Patrick because he teaches the class. So phase one, the total is eighty-two thousand and this is construction. So does that not come under construction bid laws of over fifty thousand dollars on stat purchase law?
But that's the aggregate.
Yeah, that's the aggregate.
Each one of these are going to be individual.
The plans, well, most likely they're going to be grouped together in two or three projects in closer vicinity.
Is you not going to all tee in out?
No, 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 we're not. We don't have the time to do it publicly.
Okay, because I want to be sure of, because I was hearing two quarters and I'm.
Yeah, we'll be getting close.
And mobilization for whatever section.
Right.
Hopefully we can cut down on some of that cost by that. Okay, all right. Anyone?
I would just say, I think this is a, I think this is a good step. All these are gaps that are worthy of, worthy of filling. And I, I know you've been directed to develop a capital improvements plan for streets and so forth. I would make the, I think, encourage all the parliament to think about them. They're part of the, they're part of the city where, where it makes most sense to look at things. And I'll say that one, one of the things in my award, I think, is really important because it's a, it's a face of the city that a lot of tourists and other people that are coming in to visit our city see that is in desperate need of increased walkability is the connection from Nash Street down College View, from baseball to football to basketball. We have a tremendous amount of people that walk down that street and there's no infrastructure until you get past Aiken Village. The university is in the process of redeveloping that Aiken Village site, but to be able to get down from, from Nash Street down there, I think is a, is a need that I would hope that we can plan for in this capital improvement plan moving forward to find a way to make sure that that's on, on the list because it's desperately needed to happen there. And, and I say that, well, because it gives, it's a face for so many out of town folks that are not just Mississippi State folks, but come other way and other places and that's, that's what they see. They park their car and they have to walk, walk in a ditch to, to get to the ballgame and it doesn't leave the, the best impression and it's totally unsafe, especially at night. It's a wide street. It is totally unsafe at night.
Is it, is it dark street as well?
Well, you have, you have, well, you have limited lighting, you have no walkways and, you know, to be clear, as people put during game days, they put up, you know, ropes and things.
Police tape.
To be able, to be able, you know, produce parking for people to be able to park on the side of the road, which there's ditches and I understand that, but all that just increases the chances of, of that being a, not a.
Hopefully that will, as Aiken Village develops, that'd be an exciting part of the.
Right, and that's where I think, you know, that I think the Aiken Village site will develop from art from the city's end. It's essentially from Prospect Place up, up the hill, which we have, you know, more right of way constraints and so forth to deal with there. But I would like to see that as part of that street capital improvement. How do we look at the walkways as being a piece of that?
Yeah, coordinate with MSU on that, as they develop too, see what we do.
Yeah, I, I do just want to reinforce that. I think this is just a first step, you know, you know, as we talked about the, the improvements on Yellow Jacket, College View, South Montgomery, everybody's got needs and they're worried. You know, the vice mayor talked about trying to connect rolling hills to Walisi to get some, some connectivity to that large neighborhood. So, you know, these, these are bigger projects that, that, that will take a lot of time to think about design and construct. But yeah, we need to start the conversation and put them all on the overall list so we can, we can chip away at it.
All right, thank you, Edward. Okay, we have the claims docket and we have fluffed it out so that it includes the statutory code sections that Vice Mayor is comfortable with and.
So I'm, I'm sorry, are we putting, are we going to do this on consent? Are we going to have that presentation be made?
No, no, he's, he's made his presentation now. It went out streaming, so unless there's a reason that you want to do that.
No, I'm, I'm just asking. So that's going to go to consent and my understanding is we're removing Linden Circle traffic coming from this system now.
Yeah, or lowering it down below the others, I guess. Was that your intent?
Same.
System.
Yes.
Okay.
What was the actual motion?
Well, it would be, it would be.
Just approve the plan?
Yeah, it was presentation, approval of the prioritized sidewalk improvement plan and authorization from the mayor to execute contract with the contract providing the lowest quote for each.
Okay.
And that would be consent as a, so you don't have to do the presentation, Lucy? You can change that wording to be approved.
Okay, I've got it on, on the agenda. So the cover sheet, will that need to be revised to show?
Yeah.
Okay, where did it?
I'm here.
Okay, so you're going to revise that this afternoon and get it to ASF?
Revise the spreadsheet. Is that what you're, that's the.
No, he's talking about the cover sheet that reflects not the presentation, just the approval.
And then, and then moving item on, is it number ten up into the, taking off of Linden Circle, taking off.
Move six down.
Yeah. Okay, all right. And back to the claims docket, I'm going to turn to you, Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You're good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we can, we can put that one on consent.
And just be sure that, that Starville Utilities is covered in whatever.
Assurances or.
I did, I had, I have an accountant over there now and I had to put a statement on there because I don't actually see their, all I see is the.
Well, perhaps the Starville Utilities consigning state up there.
Yes, she did and it was in the one that I put last time.
Okay, okay. I knew that you didn't see this, so.
Okay, all right, and then acceptance of the financial statement, I assume that that's not, that's not a problem. See for, for source of supply, you do a very simple process and you won't have any issues with that as a consent item. So, yeah, and then we have the following, I'm sorry.
Go back, audit of financial statements, have we scheduled a date with?
We have scheduled this coming Tuesday, but after he has not responded. And he told me out on the block party, the block party, it was still on track. He did have, he did, and I think I've told you this earlier, he did have some young accountants that left and went to Mississippi State to get in off the road and they displaced work papers, so they had to read them.
Or any of his plays.
Last one, I think, that he knows.
I mean, we've gone after bid for this or proposals for this before, but these, these days, those are about the only folks that are doing municipal auditing, is that correct?
Yeah.
So I have a greater expectation from a timeliness standpoint for next year's audit?
They will be presenting their contracts soon, so perhaps we can put a clause in there that.
Well, there shouldn't actually be a clause in there, as I recall, unless they changed it.
Like a construction clause if they start paying the city back after something.
Well, there, at one point in time, there was a clause in there that talked about the timeline of apartment. So unless it's been removed, there ought to be something in there that we probably ought to look at.
Wouldn't have been our bid lines to.
As well, no, that's assuming we do, absolutely. Unless, starts with us, but then after that.
Sandwich sandwiches.
Yes, it's true. Yeah, sandwiches are there for you. Okay, the discussion proposed purchase policy, I, I will tell you right now, I have not looked at it at all. I know Nav, Nav worked with you and, or Nav worked with Lisa, is that correct? Did Nav work with you in the purchase policy?
Me and then we sent it to Chris.
Okay, I'm sorry, so it was in your.
I sent it to the auditorium also, so it's been incorporated.
Okay, okay. All right, do we have, has anybody had a chance to look at, besides Chris, somebody?
It was mine, I think.
Okay.
But, but I was looking at it from a legal standpoint.
Exactly, no, I understand, I understand. Lisa, from your perspective, the purchasing policy, because that's the stuff that you deal with on a regular basis.
I'm.
Now, the purchase policy is, is being discussed right now. You, you and Lisa both were involved in that one, so I just want to get you to, if the board has any questions about that.
The purchase policy at the end, at the beginning, that everything was followed Mississippi State code, that nothing even can supersede state code.
Okay.
But, but the address as to how a purchase order must be processed and all that is finally state code, so.
Okay, so we are.
And then the discipline actions now.
That was, that was Nav's, Nav's area, okay. And Nav, you're comfortable with the discipline action? Did you look at it, since Chris looked at it?
I have.
I'm sorry, Alvin Ball? Yes, Ms. Latimer and Nav are both okay. At least it's okay, so.
And before, before this term is over, and I've spoken briefly with Lisa about this, is I hope yet before that we can get those kinds of things keyed in the system at the point the purchase order is executed.
With proper...
Yes, so that we have a, so that we have a better feel for monies that are recovered, all that they have, and make sure they can spend, yeah.
Right, and that's, we have that capability in the software, just a matter of exercising it and bringing the purpose into it.
We've got to figure out how to do that.
We will have that, we will have that meaningful...
Before this term is up.
Absolutely, well, we can do it sooner than that. I mean, like, you know, this year. Okay, all right, so any reason for that not to be part of consent? Anyone have any questions about that at this point? Okay. Well, wait a minute, that's discussion of, do we want to go ahead and adopt the purchase policy? So we will change our agenda to reflect an adoption of the proposed purchase policy? Okay.
Are there any major changes to the previous years?
We didn't have one.
Oh, it says, so what this is saying is moving forward, though annually, we will address the purchase policy right now?
What's that again?
We're going to address the purchase policy annually from here on out?
We can review it annually.
Is that, did I read that correctly, and you?
If needed, if any adjustments made, we can review it.
Okay, so this is, this is, we're implementing one?
Yes, we have not had one.
Okay.
New, new news. Okay. All right, Parks, we have a lease agreement with Ms. Smith's Educational Services, and she has been using the Niemo Center, I think, for several years, Mr. Peters? For how long?
Just one year.
Oh, just one year. I'm sorry, I was thinking it was for longer than that, okay. And there have been no issues with that?
No issues.
Okay.
And, and we're not quite ready on this document. The document references Exhibit A, which is a letter from August 3, 2016. It was an exhibit previous lease, and it just carries over. Herman is working with Mrs. Smith to get that, that letter attached. But right now, we don't have it in the packet. Just for record purposes, Lisa, the letter that's in the packet is the wrong letter. Because it's dated July 10, 2017. We need the one dated August 3, 2016.
Is that an addendum to the lease?
It's exhibited in the lease.
This is, this is what I received.
I understand, but I'm just saying, so, so if we get the letter in in time, it can go forward. But if not, it needs to be...
Okay, all right, we can put it on there and look at it contingent for where it comes from. Do you agree with that?
But a quick question about their usage of this place. It seems like there's a kitchen in there, in there. Are they allowed to use that?
No, that's for meal on wheels deal. They use that.
The meal on wheels, but the season wheel does use that.
Yeah.
And there would be a conflict with these people using this one. Because I know they've gotten into a big charge during the summer, and part of the difficulty was they didn't have access to a rear drive or stuff.
Do we have a, do we have a contract with Wheels on Wheels?
None that I'm aware of, but it's, it's...
No, I understand. I just wondered if you had anything written. Might want to look at that for formal, formalization purposes. Okay, so we will do that, and they'll be continuing to receive that letter.
So this letter, like, is it something wrong, or there should be...
The date is wrong, one of them.
The date is wrong. And it's the wrong terms, too.
Oh, okay.
We can go back to the minutes and measures, Lisa, and pull it just a second later.
Can you do that? I mean, we can get an E-PAC out in two hours.
Okay. All right. And we have eleven water fountains that, we've had this water fountain discussion before about their not being operable. And so apparently, they are so old that we don't have parks that we're getting. And so we're going to need to purchase eleven water fountains, and that's what this is about. So Mr. Peters has that information on the, on the cost, which should be, if you got it there, please. No worries. No, you're fine. And he's got his, the quotes. He left a lot, one of these guys left a lot of money on the table, too. And one's, one was like twenty thousand dollars or something, the other were, and this one was like nine hundred something. So I can't imagine how that all came to pass. But anyway, there's your water fountain. It's an outdoor water fountain. It's got a one-year warranty, and hopefully, all of that will do just what we need to do so that we can upgrade our parks as needed. Alvin Ball, kitchen with a mouthful of sandwiches, but would you like to discuss it?
No, I'm good with that. I think much, much needed, and as we move forward, I think we've got our ways to revisit the ones that we get, but I think this is much needed.
And we have, we have funds available to do that.
Please jump both over now.
Sir? The ones that are stand, single stand alone, the other one is... Okay, all right. Any problem with putting that one on consent for anyone? Okay. We have personnel items. It's a, one is a hire of Don Estrada as a payroll collector clerk for the, for the Starville Utilities. And then three firefighter positions and a vacant physician and maintenance worker. Anyone have any concerns or issues they'd like to share regarding those three personnel items?
The firemen are all existing positions.
Yes, correct, Nav. The firemen are all existing positions, yes. They had some folks resign. Okay. And then the vacant, it was a vacant maintenance worker position, that too is an existing position. And then Mr. Kent's got the payroll collector clerk. Okay, any concerns with consent for those? All right, we are now down to a grant for the bulletproof vest, which is thirty patrol vests replacing expired vests. And this is going to be a fifty percent match, which is going to be, our half of that is ninety-seven fifty. Okay, any issues with any of that going on consent? Okay, and the good news is, we have nothing else, and we also have no executive session.
I have a little ways, a good point about liaisons to various boards, if we need to revisit any of that.
Oh, well, if we want to, we've got a moment here, we can do that. Value associated with, and mine is obviously historical.
I don't want to compete.
Well, that's my question. Is there, is there value to it?
Scott saw the ultimate point. He asked me if we'll go through that, I guess. Let dispute position.
What was his, what board did he liaise on?
Main Street Board.
He's main?
For the main street.
Okay, your main street. I know Alvin Ball was a Starville Housing Authority, and she, that was the first, because we had never done that. So, and I never heard of the value, so if somebody would help me be informed about it.
Twenty-one?
You know, you know, thanks a lot.
Yeah, you CBB, say you CBB.
No, okay, all right.
I haven't seen no value.
Okay, I'm not getting a whole lot of feedback of positive value to it, so...
I was just asking, he mentioned it, so what was your question on it? If we need to replace any one of the... My CBB.
Well, I mean, I don't, I don't see if someone does, I mean, we're going to stay, as far as I'm concerned, we're going to stay in pretty close contact with CBB, the partnership, and all those folks as we work our, our way through this, various issues over the next number of years. Because I want us to be in a strong partnership with all those guys. So, you know, if, if somebody feels a desire to go, I would just say, go to the meetings. They should be as public as ours are. Okay, if we, if we have nothing else, I think we've, we've closed out our work session, gone through our agenda, and we can let Ms. Pardon go and try to put together that packet and highlight those items on the agenda. And for those of you who haven't had lunch, please do so. I know Vice Mayor has. Alvin Ball, I don't think you have. Yeah, have you?
Mine's over.
Okay, all right, good deal. Well, thank you all. Hopefully, everyone will be comfortable and this was successful. And are you faithful to the folks? We appreciate you being with us.
This meeting with the county is going to be...
What, what, what's the house?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
That's that Thursday?